Okay.
Those were our initial discussions. So what is this group passionate about in terms of where we think this money could go?
Well, sorry.
I said Riverwalk.
I think that was I have to, I mean, that was part of our plan too. I think there was, I don't, well, one thing that I would like clarification on, the walkways, the cobblestone.
What walkways meaning?
Uh, sidewalks.
Hooker payers?
Yeah, now, where does that fall? I don't think that's in the tip plan, that, you know, so here we go. That city property that was funded by a DDA project, it's, you know, what, twenty something ago?
Twenty-one years old.
Yeah, so it needs a lot of work.
Jeff?
That's not a tip, that wasn't a tip, I don't think, so.
Well, the improvements were to the street scape.
So that could, that be falling under that.
So, if you don't mind, there's a, there's a couple of those type of things that we've talked about at the design committee off and on for years, and resetting the brick payers was a big one. Last, last year, two years ago, we actually did one block, I think it was about twenty thousand dollars, and the discussion that we had at the design committee level was, if we don't have the money, like, we were bonding to do the whole downtown, let's incrementally take block by block, and basically what they did was just pick it up, put new bedding sand below it, and then reset them so that they were level. What you see out there is just, it's, they settle differentially than what the sidewalk has, and they create trip hazards. So, I, I would think that that would qualify as a different product.
And we don't have to, I mean, I, I think at one time, and you might have done it here on the hill, did you stamp? Did it extend stamp?
Yeah, we worked with the, there were a couple of things that we did there. The biggest one was drainage. We had to do some drainage improvements from the upper parking lot on Water Street, and so the city worked with the DDA, and that was kind of a pilot project to put back the brick payers and stamped concrete. I don't know what everybody thinks about it, but I will tell you that after we installed it, it was slipperier than all get out during the winter, and we probably had twenty slipperfalls within the first month. Part of the, part of the issue is that the concrete, colored stamped concrete needs to have a sealer put on it, it's the sealer that makes it slippery, and so then we, I think we had them go back and add what's called shark bite, it's abrasive, but it didn't work out real well.
But Jeff, it, it didn't work out real well because it's on a hill, and it's not slippery now, I felt just the other day walking up, and I feel it all slippery.
And it's because we haven't put any more sealer on it, like, you're supposed to do anything.
It doesn't seem to be deteriorating. I, I, I'm a proponent of that, because you do that, and then it's not a maintenance issue anymore. I mean, look at the, look at the crosswalks, those won't get sealer put on, I mean, they, some of those have been there for ten plus years now, where they did the stamp.
Or probably fifteen, yeah.
And they're, they're holding on pretty well. So that might be an option.
So I'll just put it out there so everybody knows my opinion, because I'm opinionated. I, I think we're ready for a new street scape. I hate to put lipstick on big, I think resetting the payers is a waste of time and money. The concrete around them in a lot of spaces is bad, and the street scape's twenty-one years old, so I would love to see us not put good money after bad and look at what it would take to do a new street scape. That's where my head has been at. I'm very passionate about the Riverwalk, but I also feel like the Riverwalk is a park, and it's a lot easier to get public and private buy-in for parks and get people passionate about parks to find funding for those. It's not as easy to get people passionate about streets and sidewalks, and that's the face of our downtown, is the streets and sidewalks and potential bump outs or whatever we decide with an architect. So that's just kind of where my head's been at lately, and I just want to put it out there and see if anybody else is with me on that. I'm not going to hang my hat on it, but I just feel like, man, we're, how long does a street scape last? I mean, we've been beating up these streets and sidewalks with, you know, plows and everything for over twenty years, and it wasn't that great of a product when it was finished. I mean, let's be honest, there was a lot of failures, and, so, could I, please?
So, I agree, and I think there's, there's, there's an excellent MSU project that was finished in twenty eighteen. You know, it's a favorite of some people who slipped it to me, you know, because it was their favorite, and it went through a long public process, and it's, it's a design of the street scape and the river, and the Riverwalk that the community already agreed to, right? This was, this, this was part of their design process. And so, decisions about materials and, and things like that, you know, one way to approach this is to say, we need to get a landscape design architect, or whatever, and a firm that does that, and take that plan and look specifically at the, at some areas to say, you know, how large an area could we afford to convert into a new street scape? Another big issue for us is going to be connecting the businesses on River Street down to the Riverwalk. There's all kinds of missed opportunities to get people back and forth between, you know, our business district and people walking the Riverwalk. You can't buy anything on the Riverwalk, and you don't see the river from River Street, right? There's a connection there, so, you know, some investment in both of those places to say, this is what we're talking about, this is what our design is going to be, and then incrementally over the next thirty years, as we have opportunities, we build out more of that, more of the Riverwalk, more of, more of the downtown street scape, so.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that back around. Ed, do you recall what the street scape twenty-two years ago looked like in terms of funding, and what role the DDA played in that, and what the city played in that?
I've been with the city for nineteen.
Okay.
So, but we have, probably have records from the bond, I don't know that, you know, I mean, Jeff might have a better idea.
Okay, I wasn't sure how long.
But I'm sure it funded, you know, leaving on the street and all the payers, decorative arch, some of that stone work.
So, the way it came about was that the city was planning, was going through the sewer separation projects. So every north-south street was going to have a new pipeline put in it, starting at Spruce Street, Pine Street, Oak Street, Maple had already been done, Poplar had already been done, Green Bush had that done, and Division. And so, I was with the engineering firm at the time, but I sat down with the city manager, and I said, we're going through every intersection downtown but three. Should we put the intersections back with something better than what's there? And he said, holy cow, this is what sets off opportunity for a street scape.
Okay.
So then the city started working with the DDA, and I believe the city bonded for all those, the sewer work and stuff, obviously, but then paid for the street infrastructure downtown curb-to-curb, and then the DDA bond was for all the street scape improvements.
Okay.
Installation of the fountain, the brick payers, the crosswalks, the arch, you know, the new trash cans, the planters, the irrigation system, all of those type of treatments.
Okay.
The city's portion of it, not necessarily the sewer piece, that was like a third funding stream, but we, it did issue a Michigan Transportation Fund bond, which is capitalized under Act fifty-one, I think that. I don't think that's an option this time around, because those funds were committed out three or four years to our transportation improvement plan.
Okay.
But that was a piece of that funding, it was two, that was only a fifteen-year bond.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, I, I guess I didn't realize you weren't there for that, but we, we had received a grant to do River Street so the city could, could participate in that, so there was several different funding sources, and then we couldn't get it to work, the timing worked, so we reapplied the M.D.A. grant to Spruce Street, and then transferred the local money from that to do River Street, but.
Gotcha.
But I, I believe basically the DDA paid for all of the street scape improvements.
You probably don't remember what that number was, do you?
Probably about the bond was.
The bond was.
I think it was around two million, I can't remember.
Yeah.
It also, it built the bathrooms near Goodyear, so there was some, some stash of plans.
I have a. Street scape is in our development plan, because they know it had one point four, one point four five million dollar target, I, for a number, and our sidewalks are all deteriorating. There have been people that have fallen, the cracks are really big, it's, you know, the cement itself, even though the unevenness of the papers, the cement itself has lived its life, so, it's just something you can.
Can I ask a question? So, I'm just, I guess that when I think of Riverwalk, I worry about the erosion that's taking place up the channel.
Mm-hmm.
So, are we saying that it's gonna have to be one or the other based upon what dollar amount that we're talking here?
I think we're just throwing ideas around.
Okay.
I, like I said before, I feel like there is more tolerance in the community to get private and public dollars to help out with the Riverwalk, because people are passionate about it, and we're, and it seems that the last year, year and a half, they're more passionate about it for a number of reasons, and so, but I don't, as bad as, you know, the streets and sidewalks are downtown, I don't see people getting passionate about that, so it's hard to find private dollars for that sort of thing. Nobody's gonna say, hey, I'll donate ten thousand or fifty thousand to a street or a sidewalk. You may have that with the Riverwalk. I mean, I know we would have that, so, it's a, it's a stretch, but I just, I, we can't, we don't really have the opportunity to bond for one point five million and then come back in two years and say, hey, we want a couple of million dollars more.
And I hear some, here's one.
And I have no concept at this point to what one point two-five million dollar buys on a street scape, I don't know, but that's where my head's at with this, with these dollars, and.
So Kyle, one thing, Jeff and I have talked about this, and we'll be working it into some financial plan for the city, but that's to get Spicer Group to do a comprehensive.
Capital improvement.
Review, capital improvement, I guess, I'm trying to call it, for the Riverwalk.
Okay.
And then put costs of that.
Okay.
I don't disagree that there needs to be some improvements to the street scape, but I'm not sure I'm a proponent of redoing everything, because there's a lot of those components that are still perfectly fine, and maybe, maybe they're not necessarily the best aesthetically, but I think we could spend a lot of money replacing concrete that's perfectly serviceable, and then not miss out on an opportunity to fix the Riverwalk or do something else, I think it's a balancing act, you know, I don't know.
So, when, when Ed told me I had to be at this meeting.
He wanted to.
Voice my opinions, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the stuff, and Kyle, you're aware of this, but a lot of the stuff that came to my mind, because we've talked about it at the, at design committee level, is, was the brick paver resetting, all the lamp posts, the cast iron posts need to be repainted with epoxy. We've talked about replacing all the globes downtown with LEDs. I don't know if you saw Ed's email, but we actually have four of them installed in front of the marina, and at night, there's obviously a difference, during the day you can see that there are brand-new globes, so, so a lot of those things are exactly, kind of almost what Ed is saying and in between what you're saying is, there's, there's a lot of that street scape that, that has met its twenty-year initial performance, and it needs to be refreshed. And I don't know if that means a full redo, or if you don't like the brick payers, and you want to change the color patterns, or you want to go to stamped concrete, you know, that would be an opportunity, but it seems like it needs a fresh coat of paint on the whole thing. And I, and I think it's probably, the MSU study did some of that, is, what do you, what do you got, and how do we make it a little bit more vibrant, and how do we make it a little bit more current? So, I, but I, I think you would need to engage a landscape architect that would, you know, hire them to go through it, come back with color boards and options, and kind of spur that, oh, here's what we could do, and, and then put some numbers to that.
I think that, I, I think that's right, and I don't think it's just about, I don't think that study would be just about what we could do with this bond. That study should guide every, just every choice, you know, somebody, you know, five years from now, you know, swings a crane through, you know, a light fixture, well, what's the design? What, what do you buy to replace it? You know, what, you know, we do a lot of stuff incrementally over the years, and you can either go in the direction of the design you've got, or you can do it in a haphazard way, you know, making all the materials choices on the fly. You know, I'm looking for guidance so that when something comes up and has to be maintained, you know, a storm comes through and tears out part of the Riverwalk, what design, what are the materials that we put back in its place with the insurance money? You know, that, that kind of guide, I think we need.
Well, that, that's what, yeah, I mean, that, that plan is definitely what we had available to us when we did this originally. And it was also the idea that it would be a roadmap, this is the foundation, because they researched, you know, they, they took into account what the, oh, like the architecture, you know, what was the feel, what's the vibe, how do people relate to this community, all that stuff, so there was a lot of that, you know, community involvement that actually gave us an idea of what people wanted this to be, like, it's not going to be, you know, it, it's going to be Victorian.
You were referring to the MSU's?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, so there was, there was research behind all that that started that, and then when it came out, the street scape was definitely gorgeous with the moles and ivory, you know, we needed to take care of it. You're right, downtown is tired-looking, you know, some of the buildings look the same when I was driving down the rivers, or, you know, as a kid, you know, things have changed, so it does need a fresh coat, but that's exactly what, why the MSU study came in, was so that we would have a roadmap where we're going with what our city would look like. I don't know if we have to do every section, I think about, you know, the gateway project coming in, and I think, well, you know, they're going to be tearing up a lot of that, so I would say absolutely nothing now to that end, you know, we don't need to touch that because they'll be involved, you know, so, you know, down here by the marina looks fairly good, you know, just going in and saying, here's our hotspot priorities, and I think, like, from, you know, bridge to bridge, well, not bridge to bridge, bridge to division is really the downtown book that needs to be spruced up. What is that, like, three blocks, two blocks, two blocks, I think?
I would, you know, add another block or so, that's the one I was, but.
Well, I think we can, in that design, that was different ideas for, you know, which was great, but, you know, I, I love the, the Riverwalk, I'm, I'm so appreciative of all the hard work the people who've been volunteering and doing stuff down there, and they've really, really spruced it up, we just have to keep that going, and I guess just having a plan, like you said, getting a plan together.
But Karen, I, I think, I think as a community, we missed the boat on the Riverwalk to do that refresh when it was twenty years old. You know, you're talking about the, the street scape, it was brand-new, looked good for a while, now it's starting to show its age, we missed that boat on the Riverwalk by not refreshing it, and so I think this is an excellent time for you guys to be talking about that. Now a lot of that Riverwalk's going to have to be reconstructed.
Well, it's a plan, I mean, you know, I, I build a building, and I know that I'm not going to ever have to pour another diamond in for twenty, thirty years, I'd be foolish to think that.
Yeah.
So what's my plan? Well, I just got three buildings done. This year, this group gets a remodel, new, new carpeting, all painted, next year I go to here, I mean, what's the plan? We have to have the same thing for, for.
Right, if we're doing an asset management plan for the Riverwalk.
And that's, where you can do Spicer's, can do that, right?
Are they only doing the Riverwalk? Are we, they're, they're only doing the Riverwalk and not, not the River Street?
We have, we have asset management plans for our water system, our sewer system, our street network, we started putting together plans for asset management plans for the physical buildings, the city buildings, the parking lots, and so the next one that we're going to tackle is the Riverwalk specifically.
And then, do you have it on, on the, the list of plans to get, you know, maintaining, you know, streets and sidewalks on River Street?
Land is not a specific, I don't think that's.
Well, I mean, the streets are, and the street plan, I mean, we, we spent, how much did we spend on resurfacing River Street when we did the spillery sale? Well, I mean, we've done work down there, we've, we've done, we replaced all the crosswalks, so that's an ongoing thing, but there isn't a plan for, which I think is probably more of a DDA function, is all the decorative features, you know, the posts, the payers, the irrigation system that doesn't work, the fountain, the arch, some of that stuff, I don't, there's not a specific asset management.
So in terms of, you know, approaching a, you know, a firm to do this, it would be building out the, the MSU study, and also including an asset management plan for the feat, for those features in the downtown district.
I mean, and potentially, it depends on, I guess, the scope of what those bond projects are going to look like, I think there are a lot of questions that have to be answered, you know, to scope that out, but, yeah, I mean, at some point, when you have a beautiful new River Street, whatever it is, if there's expectations set as to how that should be maintained and repaired maybe differently than it's been in the past, that has to be known, and a cost put on that, and everybody understand what that means, because it's going to cost more than it did the last time around.
I mean, from, and maybe it's just me, but I have a chicken and the egg problem here. I kind of need that study and the plan in order to balance things out by talking about bonding, you know, it's like, I think that plan has to come first.
I would agree with that. If, if we have an asset management plan for everything else, why wouldn't we have one for streets and sidewalks downtown?
I'm hearing there is one for streets, and so we do have one for streets, you said, so.
So we re-rate all of our streets through the system that the state of Michigan recommends for, for the asphalt condition, and obviously in, in the downtown, that's the only one that we have crosswalks on like that, and we replaced all of those, right, Jeff? They were all payers, they're all now stamped concrete. So I mean, those are evaluated, they're not specifically rated in that hazer system, but we have a rating for the downtown street. The sidewalks just, you know, tries to fix the trip hazards, and if their slabs need to be replaced, they get replaced, so I mean, that's kind of on an autopilot is how we.
Yeah, the sidewalks are a little, they're, they're different. What we're, the current plan that, or the current process we have right now is we, instead of just spotting them all around town, we try to make it as, as efficient as we can, and spend the annual allocation and get as much done as we can, so, we started at one end of town, which was the north side, and we, we're using a proprietary process where we cut the sidewalks, so where there's a trip hazard, or a lip, or one, one slab is heaved up, say, an inch over the next one, they will actually cut and bevel that to eliminate that trip hazard, and then when they go through a section of town, then the public works crew comes behind it and does all the ones that are not candidates, and they do the removal replacements. We are all the way from Maple Street West, we're up to Sixth Street right now, and that company's coming back again this fall, in fact, we already have them scheduled, we, we budgeted more money this year for that, so I'm going to have them do the Riverwalk sections where the concrete is, you know, we all saw that on our walk, so we're going to take care of that section. The trip hazards that are downtown are not really from heaving concrete, the concrete is in decent condition, there's some sections down past Cardine's where there's a lot of spalling, but most of the trip hazards are from the brick paver settlement.
I, I, sorry, I, we got to treat downtown a little bit differently than the rest of the city, I mean, it's not, it's not the same, and the sidewalk conditions are in terrible shape, it's not even, it's not, I mean, it's not even close to being acceptable, I mean, I just walked behind people with a stroller today on concrete, and they couldn't even push the stroller in the spot, so, I mean, and we have to at least admit how bad it really is, the crosswalks are bad, the sidewalks are bad, the payers are bad, if we can't agree on that, I don't know how we're going to move forward, and we can do a walkthrough of downtown, and we can trip the whole way, so, I, we, we got to at least understand that, we have to treat River Street and the perpendicular streets to it differently than we treat the rest of the city. You're not coming downtown and cutting out sections of concrete, that's never happened, and we're not grinding down sections of concrete downtown, that, that doesn't happen, so that may be a function of, you know, you know, Seventh Street or whatever, where it's just a trip hazard, but downtown's a lot different, it's the face of the city, it's what makes the city look good or bad when people come here to visit, and it, it doesn't look good.
It has a much traffic as well, you know, foot traffic.
And am I wrong?
No, I was, I was going right where you're at, and I also wanted to say, we keep kind of going into the weeds, and I want to come back out to, an asset management plan that has to be part of all of this. If I, if you, if, like you're saying, you know, if there is, if I'm going to pay, lay cement or whatever, and do some of the sidewalks, I'm, I'm going to go back to the road. You have a maintenance asset management plan for the roads, hazer study, or hazer study, I get that every year, we've got red, yellow, green, you know, they're all marked, and so every year, when I, when I get the report for the county, then I can see, yep, this one's taken care of, this one was taken care of, so on and so forth. I heard you say you have the study, but you don't always follow that study specifically.
Well, there's no, there's way more yellow and red roads in the city than we can fund a year, so on top of the hazer ratings, which is just the objective data, and I want to come back, Kyle, to objective data, but I think that's a critical component of this discussion, but we've got the objective data on the streets, then we match up who we need to utility projects underneath that, are there other issues with drainage or whatever it might be, are there's there grant funding available, there's all these other variables that go into when creating what Jeff calls the transportation improvement plan, which actually then lists out the projects. You might have a red road that's in really poor condition, but if it doesn't have utilities under it, it's a local street, there's no grant funding, it may not rise up to the top of the list, there's going to be other projects that do, so you're not going to take care of every one of those, but that's how that function works, and I think it works very well.
And understanding, asset management does not mean fix the worst first. Asset management keeps the good asset in good.
In good shape.
And then, as you can afford the horrible asset, then you spend capital on that, and that, that is very counterintuitive to what the public thinks.
I mean, you see that horrible asset happening one year, and you're kind of doing a determination, oh, boy, my foundation looks a little bit rough over here, I'm going to have to start putting some of my asset line, my, over here, into my maintenance budget, because that's going to, in two years, I have to have a full redo, and so, you know, you're still managing it, you just don't wait till it's trashed.
The other thing that I would point out, and this is a contentious issue in my mind, we don't have an asset management plan for sidewalks, because the sidewalks by ordinance are not the city's responsibility. We are doing improvements to them anyway in spite of the ordinance, and we've brought that before council, how many years ago was the last time?
It's been several times at MSU's council.
And they have not chose to switch that. The sidewalk by ordinance is the adjoining property owner's responsibility to maintain and keep and repair.
In the downtown?
City, in the city.
In the full city, so that includes all of the, the property owners on River Street?
I've done an attorney, but that's what the ordinance says.
I'm just trying to.
So for my commercial properties, I'm in, I, I'm responsible for the resetting payers? Just a question, because if that's the case, then that's.
I mean, I get, it depends on whether that's a sidewalk or not. If you consider it part of the sidewalk, technically yes, practically no, I would come to the thought of enforce that.
Not enforce it, but I'm just asking the question, because it's.
When I, when I owned the restaurant car down here, I didn't want payers. I was told I own that property, it's my responsibility, but I had to accept that. My thing was, I don't want them, I don't like them, I don't want them, I didn't have a choice.
Well, I think it's great, I mean.
So, it's my property, but yet.
I, I didn't, I didn't know that, that's, I do, so, so I own.
I, I didn't, I didn't know that, that's, I do, so, so I own up to the street?
Well, that's not what we're saying. I'm saying the ordinance requires the sidewalks in front of your property to be maintained.
Even though they're in the redway, yeah.
Okay. So, they're.
And listen, it, it's old, it's outdated.
Okay.
And I don't think it's appropriate, but, but it is what it says.
Isn't that normal?
It's not unusual.
Okay.
It's not unusual.
But there's other communities that's absolutely the worst, and you know what, their sidewalks are probably better.
And that, and that goes as far as no removal and, and everything. So, in spite of that, and we've, we've had this discussion with council, in spite of that, we've actually improved, or not improved, we've, well, we've improved the process and I would say in the past, we were probably eliminating thirty, forty trip hazards a year by sidewalk replacements. Now, I'm, I'm, we're in the four to five hundred a year. So, we're making very good progress, but it's gonna take ten years to get citywide. And, and because everybody wants theirs done, right? We just said, we're just gonna go through the city in sections.
But you're talking about residential streets, right?
I, we did stuff in the DDA district when we came south of the river.
Well.
So, I don't discriminate against that. This year, we also have money budgeted and have not got it up and running because we have so much construction going on. But we've done a pilot program. So, if I'm not gonna be, if my crews aren't gonna be in front of your house for, say, three years, but you want your sidewalk replaced, we're setting up a program where if you pay fifty percent of that, we allocated separate funds to match you and have that privately dealt with the contractor.
So, theoretically, we could do the same thing in the DDA district?
Sure.
What if that be?
So, so, I, I just wanna get to a principle here. I, I understand, you know, I understand the logic behind, you know, not wanting to include the sidewalks in a capital, uh, asset management plan because it's not technically the city's. I don't think that's right. I think you have a capital asset management plan that includes sidewalks, and then we'll sort out the political issues later. It's right to have a plan to maintain the sidewalks.
Well, Bruce, if you have a plan, I get, is, is it a written formal document? No, and this is where I guess it gets back to objective standards. The city, the city, was it two inches, Jeff, for trip hazards?
By law, yes.
Standards, so.
Right.
So, if, if we have a, if we have a sidewalk that's heaved because of a trip hazard, and, and we're, we're made aware of that, you know, we need to go mitigate it if it's more than two inches. But that's where, where your standard toward liability comes in. Right, I mean, we wanna try to do that so people don't trip, we wanna prevent trip hazards. So, maybe the, the most efficient way to do that is, like Jeff said, is the saw cut. That takes, that takes care of the trip hazard, right? So.
But even the discussion that we're having here is a giant move forward because we're talking about, you know, a plan. Maybe the public doesn't want, you know, the, the standard, you know, uh, to be, you know, X number of inches. Maybe they want it lower in, in the DDA district.
Right.
And that should be discussed and then implemented in the plan.
Exactly, let, let me finish where I was going with that. So, so we saw cut that sidewalk, takes care of the trip hazard. If you've seen around town where we saw cut, it, now it's nice and shiny, right? The, the rest of the sidewalk might be dark, and it's, and it only goes back however far they take it back to get it. So, so it might not look like a brand new sidewalk, so, but like Jeff says, rather than doing forty a year, we can do four hundred a year.
Right.
Okay. But to Kyle, to your point, and I'm trying, it's been a long route to get back here, but the, the, your quote was, the sidewalks in the downtown are deplorable, and I don't like to look something basically, right?
Sure.
So, I can walk down the sidewalks in the downtown and say, you know what, these are perfectly fine if you look at a lot of other areas. So, the point being, until this group in the city as a whole and whoever's player can come to an objective standard for what the condition of the sidewalks in the downtown needs to be, we're gonna continue to have this discussion. And Kelly, it's the same thing with the Riverwalk. Until we come to an objective discussion about what the condition needs to be maintained at, and we can all agree that, yes, this is meeting the balance between aesthetics and affordability and, you know, all those things that enter into that, we're gonna struggle with what needs to be replaced. Now, maybe, to your point, the standards in the downtown, maybe it needs to be a halfing. We don't know what it is, I don't know what's reasonable because concrete does settle all of that.
Right.
If we're talking just aesthetics, you know, maybe it's a matter of cleaning the sidewalks and seeing how much that improves them. You know, we, we don't do that anywhere else, but again, maybe it's a different standard in the downtown. But those discussions have never been had before.
Right, and, and adding that plan together, while we do the walkthrough, adding that plan together, you know, and saying, you know, two inches, four inches, you know, difference in color of the concrete, what makes a difference, what doesn't? Let's agree on this, you know, and then we'll plan, you know, we'll manage accordingly.
I think, I think, you know, I, 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 is everybody seeing the MSU study? Okay. Does, does everybody like it? Are there things that you don't like about it, or do people like it?
I never look at it from the standpoint of, okay, this is what we're doing, so I would wanna review it. And, and conceptually, at a, you know, from a distance, oh, yeah, that's nice, but that's not, it was never presented like, hey, this is what you're doing, this is like.
And it doesn't have implementation details.
Right.
It doesn't get to the point.
Well, no, it doesn't. It doesn't, but though that plan, um, does kinda slide over to the tip. So, some of those things are in there, so, um, and I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but there was, and it might be just my notes, there was some more detail in regards to what, what exactly or what, what areas are we really looking at. I think that that is a foundation, or if, if as a group we look at that and say, okay, this is what visually we want, then we back up and start saying, do we have a contractor that can come in and, I mean, we need greenery downtown, you know, so. That is gonna be taking up the sidewalk, you know, putting in certain plants, but you're not gonna wanna put a big old wilt tree or something up. You know, it, it's like, you're gonna have to really give the right stuff, so. Foundation, and then once we agree to that, then we can start putting the actual, what it should look like and, and what those specs would be, and put the plan for how we manage that right on top of that. I mean, it's like three sections, but again, it's if people like the MSU plan.
Do you remember some of the, some of the key things that were in that plan? It's probably been a year and a half since I read the MSU plan.
MSU plan, the bump outs, um, were really attractive, and I think we had a bump out almost at every intersection, you know, from ridge to ridge. I have it right here, yeah, I can just.
Oh, cool.
Show you. And there was greenery, uh, we added trees, yeah.
Just trying to remember.
Sitting spaces.
If technically, the property owners in charge of, they're responsible for what's in front of them, is an assessment possible?
You, you can always look at special assessments. I think, I think the point, Jeff's point of that is. I, I don't think there's any appetite on council to start shriveling these costs off on the property owners. You know, maybe that, you know, council changes, right? So, I think we need to think that a plan, at least for the downtown, probably doesn't involve that, but keep that in our back pocket, my suggestion is something we potentially look at.
You know, if, if, you know, we got a job to do here, you know, managing this resource.
Related stuff on the.
And, and using the, the ability to bond correctly and responsibly, right? So, we have a plan that, you know, says, you know, we can do X amount of downtown. It's council's decision, you know, how, how much farther to take that, you know, whether they wanna do all of downtown, whether they wanna do a special assessment, you know, however, you know.
I feel like there was.
There was a special assessment.
I feel like there was the first, the first street skate. Cause we, I was here in ninety-eight.
How much was it?
It seems like, I, I wanna say something like twelve hundred dollars, I remember.
There was, there was.
Yeah.
There was a special assessment and, and the bond.
And the bond.
Yes.
But that was twenty-five years ago.
Sure.
So, I mean, that could be a component of the funding thing, but that also potentially, you know, complicates. It depends on how many different sources of funding and the scope of.
But I mean, you don't have the power to do that, that's, that would sue council.
Absolutely, that's what I'm saying, you gotta put, you know, the funding pieces is gonna be the DDA bond, then that's one thing. If the funding piece is gonna be DDA bond, special assessment, grant, XXX, it complicates things tremendously. So, that, you gotta keep that in mind. We, we ran into that with the, the, um, the oldest section of the Riverwalk, Pepper's Park. We bonded, a big bond for a bunch of different projects, and a component of that was half of the match for the DNR grant, right, Jeff?
Yes.
And we didn't get the DNR grant. So, we resubmit, hopefully we can score higher, but at some point, you're not gonna have enough funds to do that project. And now, it's like, okay, do you do a partial project or how do you deal with that?
And, one of the potential of the land sale for condos is if there was federal money that helped build the Marina and we sell that land, then we actually have to replace it with new land. And until we do, we get a minus fifty points on our grant applications until that happens, which would eliminate upgrading that preferred block. There, there's always so many pieces to these puzzles. When, when I, I just looked at quickly some of the slides of the MSU study and, and I wasn't a part of that process, I, I'm assuming the DDA was, though.
No, it was community, I mean, it was a huge community thing.
But it, but it looks like there's different levels and ideas of how to brighten things up. I do remember specifically identifying the access to the Riverwalk, and right now, they kinda get washed out and they were saying, well, you can change the color of the arches, you can put some backing on them to make it stand out more. There is greenery shown a lot in different levels and trees downtown. Back when the street skate was done, that was a contested topic, today it may not be. One thing that, that I'll always ask you to keep in mind is the maintenance of the sidewalks and, and the streets during the winter time. The more object, objects you put out there, the more time it takes, the more time it takes, the more people get pissed at this end of the street. And they do, they, they call and complain a lot, but, um.
Yeah, the plan did have, um, signage, stuff, colors, Victorian acceptable colors. There, you know, there are some details in there, but not exactly about the, you know.
Not the level of detail, but we would need to price something out and bond for it.
A, a big section of that was, um, new buildings and improvements at the thirty-one Riverstreet intersection, which seems to be moving forward. I seem to remember a food court.
Was, was it in the art park?
Where the art park is.
Yeah, they had it. Oh, good, well, that, you know, I think, like, like you're saying too, it's like, you have to, you know, I think that's a, maybe a starting point and, and, you know, we have to treat the DDA required areas differently. I think that's a, that was, I think, a very important message that you gave, Kyle, is that, you know, our focus, I, it's great, I know, it, it's, it's a lot of work, but, you know, the city, yep, you've got all your plans, but we're gonna always be hyper-focused on the DDA area.
Well, that's the job of the DDA, is to be hyper-focused on a particular area, that's why we do this. I, I don't wanna overcomplicate this, I'm not trying, but we have an opportunity here, and if we're gonna bond, I think we should look at as much we can couple together as possible, and, and if, we should look at the last street skate and how that worked, and, and how that assessment worked, and how, you know, all those dollars went together because we're not gonna be able to come back and say, hey, we want, let's bond again. You know, we did it for the Riverwalk, we did it for the street skate, but those were ten, twenty years apart, I don't remember exactly, but, um.
I'm gonna propose an approach.
Please.
One is, uh, downtown, uh, you know, we need, we need to price out, uh, you know, the bump out, you know, a couple of bump outs with all the elements of the, the street skate.
Based on the MSU study?
Based on the MSU study. Two, we need to identify the, the, you know, parts of the MSU study that dealt with the Riverwalk and connecting it to Riverstreet and price out something specific.
Those are what?
And three, when, when we were doing the walkthrough on the Riverwalk, uh, we stopped at the brick, you know, where the bricks need to be laid out again. You said there was structural stuff underneath that that needed to be fixed before you could lay the bricks again. Do you have a list of things like that that would be considered capital maintenance?
That's part of the asset management plan that we're putting together is, the reason why we engaged Spicer is because they're gonna do a thorough capital review of the Riverwalk. Make a list of those, put a cost by those, and then the asset management plan will be then selecting, but, you know, providing for funding, sources of funding in the future and.
The, the reason I ask is because the DDA may choose that a few of those projects are so important, we didn't like to include it, so it gets done really fast.
Well, I know, and the DDA's been talking about doing that, that capital improvement plan for at least a couple of years. And we, I've had structural evaluations done in the past, but we're now gonna compile them all together as one.
Your time is gonna be.
We didn't set a, a time on that yet, did we?
No, but I'm aware of it.
Cause the, the, the clock on the, the scheduling here starts ticking at the end of October.
No, that, that schedule doesn't start ticking until we get all this figured out.
I, I was just gonna say, we, we don't.
Yeah.
We're not ready to start that clock yet.
No.
We're not? Kyle, listen.
Get the money, we'll figure it out later. We're not the private sector.
Well, there, you do have, you do have the ability to, to do a broad brush, but that, that doesn't always meet the public's approval for that. I mean, you can say Riverwalk improvements without doing specific items, but I think it's better to lay out the specific items and then put the caveat and other, so that, you know, as other things come up, you, they're fundable.
I just don't want, you know, I, I, I just keep going back to, don't wanna be in the same position that we were, you know, these last couple of years, working this out about what who owns this property and what's maintenance is and what is, what is, what's the definition of maintenance. I mean, I, I want us to have a plan. If, if, if we're gonna bond and, you know, spruce it up, I think it's gonna be just as important to have a plan about now how we can take care of it. Cause that is exactly what fell apart with all the other stuff that's happened, and that's why the Riverwalk is like it is. And, and I just think that that would, uh, it would be easier to move forward knowing that we're gonna put this in, in five years, we're gonna do this, ten years, this, fifteen, you know, that's where we'll take the plan to.
So, the recommendation is actually part of the MSU study, like, one of the recommendations is to develop a street skate plan to get improvements along the street, so, yeah.
It's a good study.
It, it really drew a lot of people and participation. It should be in everybody's email, just so you guys know.
I'm sorry, we didn't have enough, I didn't put it in.
Well, I think that a few months ago, we talked about, you know, what's the low hanging fruit, right? What are the things that I, I don't, you know, talking about the signs, right? What are the things that are lower cost but can make a big difference? And, and, you know, I don't know if those apply more specifically to the street skate or the Riverwalk, but I think that there's a lot of those that, that might overlap, right? That, that doesn't take a huge chunk of money but can really, really impact people's experiences there and their walking downtown. And of course, I know that there's a lot of improvements that are going to be quite costly, but, but there might be some things that we could do that are easy, you know.
And as it relates to, thanks, Amy, for your hands, uh, as it relates to bond, how specific do we need to be? But let's just say we said, hey, we're gonna spend all the money on the Riverwalk, we've spent all the money on the street skate. We have to be more specific than that to bond.
Yeah, probably, cause you're gonna need to be more specific than that to get cost estimates. So, I, it's, you know, it doesn't have to be A, B, C, D, E, F, G, you know, that level of detail, but it has to be, we're gonna do, you know, kind of a little product. They have to be able to describe that, you know, in the.
That's what I was saying, you could say lighting upgrades, you could say spruce street, or a street skate refresh, including pavers, sidewalk improvement.
That's the general description that would be in the bond.
Okay.
But for our purposes, it has to be more detailed than that.
And it has to be some cost estimates.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, I think LED lighting in the downtown, including no brain, that's, that definitely should be part of this plan, I think, and.
So, essentially, we need to work with a. So essentially, we need to work with a, a streetscape architect if we wanted to get some cost estimates.
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like to me that that would be the DDA's best bet. Is to find a firm that you trust, find work that they've done that you enjoy. And then, then it's looking at the streetscape as a whole, because that, that digs a little bit further than what the MSU did. The MSU was kinda giving you ideas of how you could change it. This could be a little bit more specific. It, it could incorporate portions of the Riverwalk as well.
Yeah. Where, where is everybody at in terms of Riverwalk versus, let's just call it River Street? There's more to it than that, but where, where's the good at?
I think street is primary and it would be nice to do something on the walk, but street is primary.
But the two hotels may have potentially, I mean, you know, if, if there's two hundred rooms per day adding on one end and the other, a lot of people will kind of, probably on both, but streetscape is pretty lacking. Walking it every day downtown to go grab lunch and, I mean, there's big sidewalk differences like this big that stroll the wheels. And we, you know, older people like Saint Paul with walkers, outside, and there's spices pretty big in the gaps and things like that. So, even we were doing pictures yesterday for, for the chamber and I had heels on and I stepped off the sidewalk and, you know, you just, it's easy to twist your ankle.
So, Bruce, you talked about connectivity between River Street and, and the downtown. I mean, the, the big ramp that everybody talks about with the Nalid and Masaline and all that, that, that is gonna have to be fixed and that's gonna be a.
Right, and how we fix that should fit into our plan for the streetscape.
But getting back to whether the, part of the Riverwalk should be part of the bond, I think it absolutely does for some of those, those particular areas, because those are things that, you know, are gonna go way down just what a normal return maintenance item is. Again, Spicer's gonna quantify that, but.
And if, and if I recall, the food court in the MSU study was contemplated where the art park is.
Yep.
That's private property. And we've reached, the DDA, I know, has reached out and they're still interested in selling that property. But then the discussion went past the MSU study and said, but we want people sitting and viewing the river. We have a parking lot across the street, so shouldn't we put the eating areas on the river above that switchback? And then if we need to build a surface parking lot, we could put that across the street, right?
Yep, that was a good idea.
I think that's right.
I think, I agree with that.
So, it's, it's River Street and the connections to the Riverwalk, okay?
I, and I totally agree. I still feel strongly that there are other funding opportunities for the Riverwalk because it's a park and people are passionate about it, you know, the community foundation, private industry. And that, that has to happen and it's not just gonna happen, but I, I, I feel like we're not gonna have that opportunity with, with streets and sidewalks. So, I, you know, I'm moving downtown, I'm gonna live on Riverwalk.
If you had to choose between the two.
What's that?
Yeah, if you had to choose between the two.
Yeah, and I, unfortunately, I, we don't have to choose between the two, but that's kinda where, I just don't wanna see us give, give up that opportunity, but. So, this is a work session, we're not making, we're not quoting anything, but we need to have a direction to, to moving here and direct us and staff on where to, where to go with this, so we can keep this. And, and we do have an obligation to the college because we've committed dollars to the college and they're waiting for, for that, and, and, right, Amy? Can somebody send me those renderings?
I don't have the new ones with the exact dimensions, we have the architect drawings. We have drawings, but they're not necessarily to scale, just know that.
I, I have old ones.
For original ones that Kendrick did.
The new, um.
Oh, the one, right.
Riverwalk Plaza.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have those, Jeff?
I, I, I think I do.
I can send them to you, Steve, if somebody could just send them to you.
Yeah. When I looked at it originally, there was ninety-five percent of it was on city property. Or college property, I'm sorry, the other way around.
Sorry, there's a small portion on the west side. It was all behind the mall?
Yeah.
Well, the college property goes to the river. We have an easement across those.
So, we'll just have to keep that in mind if this is gonna be financed on a tax exempt basis. I don't know what agreements the DDA has with the college and what's built in, but there may need to be other agreements that, I can see the bond council potentially raising the objection with that. I don't know what the agreements were, I think it can be worked out, we just need to make sure that we.
Yeah, we had to change the language several times. George, George Saylor looked at it all, but we had to change that a couple times to make sure.
It was, if I recall, it was because you have public parking below and adjacent to the building now, this was a handicap accessible point from that parking to the Riverwalk.
Yeah, and that's probably karma.
And I thought that George kind of vetted that out already.
Go ahead, Mark, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I, I think there's two, two different agreements here. One was for the facade work here, which took that torturous path of the parking and so forth.
That was the five hundred thousand.
That's right. And then the other part of that was, okay, then, then an additional commitment for a quarter of million to help with the Riverwalk Plaza, which is purely in the public space being, you know, part of that, part of the Riverwalk. So, I think that probably, we make sure we get the, the two things separated. The, the quarter of million then is the, the piece for, for the bond. And I think that's all legitimately appropriate. So, I mean, I think that's, that's.
Yeah, that was my right of opinion. You just said it was ninety-five percent on the college property, so if it is, then we don't have an easement, we just have to get an easement. That's all it's not. We just need to know what those agreements are.
So, I had a sidebar with this, and my suggestion is that, you know, we could talk about this when we're in, in normal session. My suggestion was to reach out to authors of the MSU study, who are listed in the study, and get some recommendations for, for designers and to work with to flush this out.
Okay. I, I also believe there's a local one that has that list, or has, at least has a place here, and I'll find out who that is.
Okay.
And then, is it, do you guys want to make people look at the MSU study? I sent kind of a basic slide presentation that was done on it. And then do you wanna see that's acceptable at the meeting? Or is that something that you want to have in that process? They know if there was adjustments, or you want them to give us an idea?
I think, I think, I think, you know, now that, you know, we've talked about it here and that everybody's gonna have the MSU study, the next meeting, we can talk about, you know, is this everybody's design and that from four, from there?
And, and if we're hiring, I was gonna call a street architect, I don't know what that's called, but, but they may come back, we can hand them the slide, but they may come back and say, okay, here's some additional things or, you know, put some reality to it, cause these are, you know, just rendering, explaining that. That next meeting will be next.
Okay, that's what we're gonna do.
Yep.
Any other additions for the agenda, or?
There's always other business.
I, we, you were talking about priorities for a bond project. I know that in past, the past couple of years, there's been discussion about additional parking at the east end and west end. I don't know if that's still on the DDA's radar.
Parking both east end and west end?
Yeah, like a parking lot or property, I guess.
It certainly hasn't been of, of discussion, I, I mean.
A long time ago, when we talked about, oh, the lots that the, Amore, a couple of Amore lots. Yeah, but that's been years ago, there hasn't been any of that discussion.
There's a lot of parking downtown.
Parking lot in the Gable project too, isn't there?
There have been.
Parking lot.
I might be.
No.
Just asking.
I'm just speaking. Harris.
Harris.
Harris is the longest word in a work session. Yeah, I, Tom and I involuntarily lived here for, you know, three decades.
Involuntarily?
Had a flood problem, you know, it flooded every year, so it put a canal through Little Town. And.
Was it Amsterdam?
Not nearly so cool. And they built parking garages at either end. Gradually over the years, there was more and more development. And now, it's a, it's an incredibly in-demand area doing very well. But parking, even though everybody thought it was stupid at the time, was what fueled the growth. And it's particularly, you know, that was in a climate that, you know, we got one bad snowfall a year. Now, we have the talent, snow removal talent of Miami, but, you know, it, it's still, you know, here, give people, you know, covered parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's something that we should look at. And that would free up existing lots.
So, you, you're talking parking random?
Yeah. With, with the potential to add hundreds of millions on top.
Right behind your, your house?
Well, you know, it's. It's a five-star building. Go for a little, go for a lot.
Mark, you wanna get on that?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
No, I appreciate the perspective.
Well, I only put that out there because I know it had been talked about at some point and didn't know if it was still a.
And you want more parking less than you can?
Not necessarily.
But watch people drive, watch visitors drive around the area looking for someplace to park. It's not pretty.
It's a problem we have for short times during the season, but it, it can be initially.
It's like the Meyer Park, when I park way away in Milwaukee, and by the time I'm in, I've seen a car sort of three times and they're still looking for parking, it's like.
You might have got the door, thanks.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, we put fifty signs, directional parking signs on the downtown.
Yeah.
To try to help that out.
Is everybody comfortable with where we're at, moving into the next meeting?
The one thing I would caution you is, is that it's gonna take time. I mean, that, that's gonna take some time for you to engage a firm, go through that process and just, just be aware of that.
And it not, and it should.
Cause those are really important decisions.
One thing that hasn't been discussed, and I'm kind of surprised that no one brought it up, is the dement, I mean, the DDA district is rather large. You think of it as River Street, but the current streetscape, all the way up to Washington, all the way down Division Street. Are you thinking that those need to be incorporated into this? Or are you gonna take the bold step of saying no, even though they're contributing tax dollars, we're really gonna focus just on River Street?
It's a good question.
We talked a little bit about that, you know, and again, it's only one point two five million and it's not an endless, you know, bag of money. So, we'd have to kind of concentrate where we're going to put those efforts. So, it may not cover everything. You know, kind of look at just the immediate downtown area. You know, we have upgrades on Washington Street here. I, I think so too. Like, repaved and all that.
Well, we, we, through Division Grant, we did a, we buried the, buried all the lines.
Yeah, yeah.
Did some sidewalk upgrades, put in the decorative lighting. It was probably repaved fifteen years ago. We're trying to get it repaved again in two years, well, next year, actually. Still working that out with them.
Jeff, do you have any benches or planters? I don't believe I got any requests from either of those areas.
Has that been done in the past? Maybe that's something that we could.
Along, not along Washington. We used to have some along Division, the library always asks.
Yeah, yeah, cause they didn't even talk to me, but that's something that we could probably try and extend to some of those items. I know it would probably be a bit just covered, cause I think we are.
I don't see a scenario, obviously, where we can do everything. But if we come up with a, a design, a look and feel, and we decide where we're gonna start and maybe with co-op, cooperation and partnership with, you know, hopefully the city and whatever funding sources they may need, that's, that's the plan, when it's high, you do it there. But I don't, I don't see how we can do it all at once. That's just my view.
Jeff, one last question. Were you working with Spicer on that AD accessible ramp? Is there, you were working on a bid for that, all right, right?
Not, not a bid, they did an evaluation, we're just waiting to get it ready. And then we'll be able to develop cost estimates and determine how we fund it and if we can.
And in the short term, whether it's closed.
Whether we need to close it or not. There's two separate, there's two separate issues going on there, in addition to the invasive species.
Dan, anything? Kelly?
I was wondering, is there a reason why we're still buying wooden benches?
Well, we have actually reached out and got permission from the historical.
District commissioner?
Mark Federer. Mark Federer, but he's basically representing the historical aspects, that we could use a composite as opposed to the wood slats. So, I've been researching if the same style of bench is available with the composite.
And we may be able to retrofit the ones that are there, but until we try one, we're going to look at support. But that certainly cut down on maintenance and approval.
Yeah, the composite wood or even the, the full PVC wood doesn't have the same, it can't span as far as the wood that's used, so we're, we're still researching, researching that.
Okay. Crosswalk signs?
Can't count the boat. I, and seriously, I mean, she told me she was gonna put me as a jet item for next week, but we're, we're having trouble sourcing materials, a lot of different stuff now. I did find two of the old ones this morning.
Did they work? Can we put them on?
Oh, they're beautiful.
No, they're trashed.
Yeah, they look like they're brand new.
The freestanding ones?
Yeah, they're at the fire department.
Never got a disaster.
They're at the fire department.
Why are they at the fire department?
No, no. I went to look at the annuals this morning and I'm like, I actually stamped a photo of it, cause I'm like, holy crap.
Yeah, they'll end up in the river.
Well, ho, holy, they're mobile, I think you can pick them up.
Yeah, they're mobile. They're, they're heavy as heck, I mean, you gotta be, you gotta be a really strong handle.
Well, you wanna try them at, at Division River?
We could.
The next intersection down, maybe? And when you got the leaks?
We could put them on.
Let's put them on.
Okay.
What would be the two? I think the beginning of downtown, so people get the message.
So, right before Division.
Yeah. And what's the next intersection?
Green Bush. I think Poplar Street's probably too close to Maple, cause you already got the light control there.
People kinda get the speed up.
We could, we could put them in Green Bush and Division and they can always be moved.
But on the east side of the intersection, it's.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. I won't remember.
I, I promise you, I took a picture this morning.
Okay, thanks, everybody. See you next Wednesday morning.
I'll be here.
Can you, can you holler in and join us?